Or I could press the other button, I guess. Okay, let's call this meeting to order at six thirty. Like to begin by acknowledging with respect that we're meeting on the traditional territory of the London speaking people. And we're honored to have the opportunity to build strong working relationships with the people of the Song He's and Esquire nations. That a call to order and look for motion to approve the agendas. Counselor Kobiyashi, seconded by Counselor Baxter, any opposition? Thank you. I'll learn that if I get elected again. Seeing none, I'll say those are past. Moving on to adoption of the minutes from committee, the whole August twenty second, two thousand twenty two, so I'm a mover. Counselor Logan, no second or any discussion? Any opposition? Seeing none will declare those passed, public participation. Do we have anybody in the public wishing to participate, anybody online? Anybody in the audience wish to speak? Thank you, moving on to new business. Item five point one from Jill Collins and Senior Planner, Local Government Climate Action Program Overview and Two Thousand and Twenty One Corporate Commission Summary. Over to you, Joe.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, so I'm just going to share my screen here, just walk through a few slides. Can we see this?
Yes, we can.
And can you see the whole slide or can you see the things on the right?
I see the things on the right. Oh, well, I don't know, left, my left.
Let's try this again. Bear with me here, technology.
I once had a problem with it myself.
Okay. We will try this again. How about now?
No, we see your whole screen.
It's a little weird. Try.
How about now?
No, now it's black, now it's good, yeah, you've got it.
Okay.
Well done, thank you.
So, thank you for your patience. So each year, the city tracks reports on its corporate greenhouse gas emissions generated by our services, things like our lighting, heating, cooling of our facilities and or powering of our fleet and equipment. We quantify our corporate emissions via energy records internally and externally from things like hydro and Fordas as contractors. For reporting purposes, we categorize our emissions into direct and contracted, which is pretty self explanatory, either we generate them or we hired somebody who generated them on our behalf. So the direct and contracted emissions are added together to equate the total tons or T of carbon dioxide CO2 equivalent E or T CO2 E. And past years, balancing credits were then also factored in to determine our overall GHG balance, which is the far column on the right. Now, while balancing credits are a tool to help achieve carbon neutrality on paper, similar to purchasing carbon credits are offset, they're not really an indication that less GHG emissions are being generated by us here at the city. So twenty twenty one's corporate GHG balance, which is dark blue on the far right, is notably higher compared to past years. Twenty twenty was the last year the Capital Regional District calculated balancing credits for participation in the household organic waste project, or what we commonly call green binning. Resulting, the city's corporate GHG balance, again, the darker part on the right, may be higher, but our total emissions, which is in yellow, is twelve tons less than that year prior. So as of twenty twenty one, Colwood, as I mentioned, no longer receives the offsets from the CRD. It's because they're not quantified in the new provincial reporting system, which is known as LG cap. So earlier, I noted that each year, the city tracks reports on our corporate GHG emissions. We've been reporting on these since twenty ten, when we started participating in the Climate Action Reserve Incentive Program, or CARA. So through CARA, we track and report, and we annually would receive a grant equivalent to the carbon tax we paid that year. In the spring of last year, CARA was canceled. This past May, the province announced the LG cap program, the Local Government Climate Action Program, and stated it was designed to support local climate initiatives aligning a cool DC roadmap by way of capacity building. So similar to CARA, in order to access funds, we have to sign onto the Climate Action Charter, measure and report on our GHG emissions, and complete a program survey and attestation form. By way of our survey reporting, we must demonstrate that the majority of received grant funds are directly linked to climatic investment. The grant Colwood received this past summer was a hundred and forty eight thousand dollars. It has been communicated that, subject to meeting LG cap program requirements, the city will receive the same grant value in twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four, for a total of four hundred and forty four thousand, two hundred and forty six dollars over the next three years. The province has stipulated that grant monies must be used for climate initiatives. This can include things like staffing contracts, investments to improve efficiencies, climate infrastructure, matching and leveraging funds for programs, for things also like communications and engagement. So LG cap grant funds can also be used to design and implement climate robust infrastructure. Considerations of how to spend these funds will be pursued via twenty twenty three budget deliberations later this fall. So with that, that's all I have for you tonight. It's just intended to be a share and an update as to where we were in twenty twenty one with emissions and the LG cap program introduction. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Counselor Kobiyashi.
Thank you very much, Chair. Great report, Joe, I just have a quick question here. Just, just to clarify in my own head, you say that targets of eighty percent, but you didn't say eighty percent of what is that? Eight percent reduction by twenty thirty for Colwood is, is that our target? Because I know it's fifty percent for, you know, Canada has, has declared a fifty percent reduction by twenty thirty, but you say target of eighty percent, but eighty percent, I didn't quite know what you meant in your report.
Sure. So the eighty percent through the chair is for the, to demonstrate the funding. So of the a hundred and forty eight thousand dollars, which we are receiving through the LG cap program, we must clearly demonstrate that at least eighty percent of that has gone for climate initiatives.
Gotcha, okay, and so, so my second question is, what, so is part of the plan, the climate plan, is, is that a roadmap and how we were going to get there, our twenty thirty targets and then our twenty fifty targets, so we're going to have a clear sort of map and what measurements we're going to set up so that we're, we're, we can actually measure ourselves against, you know, something that's absolute?
Through the chair, so coming up right after this presentation will be an update on, from Ms. Rachel Busky regarding our low carbon resilience and climate action plan as to where we are at. From my understanding, and she will comment on it in a few minutes, a draft will be offered later this year with implementation and action items to help us achieve our climate targets.
Okay, thanks so much, Joe. Counsel, Counselor Dean.
Thank you. In the report, which is the Local Government Program Survey and Attestation Form, on page two of seven, it has the four climate outcomes, and it describes our step code adaptation, and specifically part three wood frame buildings, and then it says up to size stories must meet. I just wanted to draw your attention to that, maybe we could get clarity on what the limitation is?
Through the chair, apologies, that should read six stories.
Okay. And on page three of that report, there is about, it's the second bullet on the right hand side, the description, about one, two, three, four, the fifth line down, it says the inventory will provide baseline information on the number of natural assets in Colwood, the type, the size, location, and current condition. Will the natural asset inventory identify wetlands?
Through the chair, I'm just looking up, I believe you're speaking to page three of the attachment, which is ten overall of the report, item number eight, and I do believe it does include wetlands. I would defer to Rachel Busky, who is also on the call tonight, and maybe would best be able to comment for sure.
Ms. Busky, you want to try that one?
Hello, good evening through the chair, yes, it does include wetlands, can't say.
Thank you.
And I also was wondering, will it also identify any other soil conditions such as areas where building may be difficult?
Through the chair, that could be possible by using the GIS layers to be able to identify locations that is not great for building on, given the soil conditions or given the natural assets. So depending on the layers that you want to switch on, the information is good.
Thank you.
Is that, that it, Counselor, yeah, Counselor Baxter.
I just have a question about the, on, on page two, three or four. The city is actively working on a zero emission vehicle prioritization component. We currently have a lot of leaves. Are we thinking that we might get into electric pickups?
So through the chair, and later this year, towards the end of Q four, there is a, a policy that is intended to be discussed around the council table. So I can defer over to someone from Public Works if they are in the room tonight, if not, we can follow up with more details regarding that, it's currently at the work.
Chair, Mr. Earl?
Yes.
I can confirm, the city intends to move forward with electrification of our entire fleet, and where the industry provides opportunity, we will follow our first electric pickup truck or trucks around the world.
Wonderful, thank you. You're good.
Counselor Johnson. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Counselor Baxter. Mr. Earl, it concerns me if, if we had in the direction of complete electrification, what the, the backside to that might be during a major storm response and electrical outage? Would we be better served by some kind of ratio of traditionally operated vehicles that we would have a cache of fuel that would sustain us for a few days or a week or two?
Administration can return with specifics relative to emergency readiness of our energy sources when it comes to mobility, and certainly our capacity to respond during an emergency will form part of our decision makers.
Yeah, thank you.
Anybody else for the first time? Counselor Baxter.
I just wanted to point out, Counselor Dean, that in an electrical outage, gas pumps don't work, and you can't fill up your gas car.
Okay, boys. Any further discussion? Thank you, Ms. Collins. Moving on to five point two, Ms. Busky, Program Coordinator, Low Carbon Resilience and Climate Action Plan Progress Update, floor is yours.
Thank you so much through the chair, and the purpose of this report is to provide the committee of the hall with an update on the progress of the low carbon resilience project, and to explain the core content of the forthcoming climate action plan. As you are aware, Colwood has a long history of supporting measures to mitigate the effects of climate change, most notably launching the solar program in two thousand and eleven, and in two thousand and nineteen, signing on to the Union of B C Municipalities Provincewide Climate Emergency Declaration. We currently have, currently have a second draft climate action plan, which city staff and CEA flipside consulting team continue to work on for presentation to council in November. The climate action plan uses the following five pathways to both mitigate carbon emissions and to adapt to the effects of climate change. The first pathway is strong municipal leadership on low carbon resilient solutions. The second pathway is low carbon transportation and connected walkable communities. The third, low carbon and resilient buildings and infrastructure. The fourth, connected urban and natural systems, and the final one is a thriving circular economy and eco innovation hub. Each pathway has a set of climate mitigation and adaptation strategies and tactics. Strategies and tactics have been designed to align with Colwood's emissions profile, so that our principal emission sources are the primary focus of mitigation actions. For example, in Colwood, passenger vehicles account for the largest portion, approximately forty one percent of our emissions sources, emitting thirty five thousand tons of carbon dioxide emissions per year. And transportation is responsible for most of carbon of Colwood's expenditure on energy. For example, as a community, we spend thirty nine million on mobility fuels every year. We wanted to make sure that all the strategies and tactics contained in the climate action plan had quantifiable outcomes, so we could prioritize the actions that would reduce the most greenhouse gas emissions. To achieve this, the climate action plan includes a marginal abatement cost curve, an MAC curve, and you can find this in the appendices to the briefing provided. The MAC is a measure of the cost or savings of reducing greenhouse gas emissions for a particular action. So the MAC curve divides the total costs or savings of an action as represented by the net present value, by the total emissions reductions associated with that action over time, over its lifetime, I should say, in tons. An action with a negative marginal abatement cost indicates that money is saved for every ton of emissions reduced, and of that nineteen actions modeled, sixteen of them produce savings as seen by the negative MAC curve that you have there in the appendices. And city staff look forward to presenting the draft climate action plan to council in November, and this concludes my presentation this evening.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion? Counselor Dean.
Thank you, could you explain a little bit about appendix to the first draft of the marginal abatement cost curve? I found it a little difficult to understand, for example, city building RNG procurement, I, I don't know what that stands for.
You're muted, Ms. Busky. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. The marginal abatement cost curve is just a way of prioritizing actions so that we're, we're comparing net present value with the amount of greenhouse gas reductions that we anticipate through a specific action. Please recognize that this, this version that you have in perspective just now is draft, and it is currently being worked on and modified slightly to remove some actions and to also other actions. So it's not as it will be in November, but it's plus. So it explains that everything below the red dotted line that says carbon offsets, the zero point there is a cost saving for Colwood, as in Colwood, the community, and the city itself. So if we were, if we were to electrify transit, if transit was electrified, then that would have a really very beneficial effect in terms of the cost of that and the greenhouse gas, and because cost savings and the greenhouse gas reductions. So you can see that's got that blue line on the left hand side of your graph there. And then they, the, the actions that fall above that red dotted line are the ones that are going to cost us actual money to actually achieve that. So that's basically how that, how the marginal abatement cost curve works, but again, it's being worked on, and this is just a draft form.
So it, I, I'm just trying to understand the basic premise, so where the cost savings are the greatest, it seems to be commercial and residential solar photovoltaic. But is that not also a cost to us?
Well, we have to, there are some investments that need to be made, obviously, to be able to achieve the savings. And so I'd really like to be able to bring the consulting team here to the, to the meeting in November, so that we can go through all the detail of how all the net present, present value is calculated as, as well, if you would like to understand that part. But basically, everything below the dotted line is overall, and now this is to twenty thirty as well, this is a snapshot of twenty thirty. So overall, a cost saving above the red dotted line, it will cost us to achieve not that much in terms of reductions.
Thank you.
Mr. Earl, did you want to?
Well, just perhaps one additional piece that might add some clarity, the thinking with this curve is you take the net present value of the future savings, subtract the capital cost to implement, and does that generate a savings or a loss? And so absolutely, it's bringing the future savings that the action will take into the present term and subtracting off the cost of implementing this solution.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Earl, Counselor Baxter.
Um. If I can look at the example of the commercial and residential solar PV, first of all, obviously, the savings are in comparison to something else, and I'm guessing from the numbers, that's in comparison to using B C hydro as the source of power, as opposed to replacing gas as a source of power, yes?
Through the chair, that's correct, Counselor Baxter.
It might be helpful to show that in every case, because nitpickers like me want to know what the, what we're comparing to. So residential heat pumps, I would imagine that is in comparison to natural gases and alternative flu, fuel, sorry.
I'm, I'm not clear, actually, I'm not sure whether that's compared to B C hydro's output. I'd have to find out for you.
Yeah, okay, well, I was just suggesting it should be in, in the next draft of this, so that everybody can understand it, with or without an explanation.
Noted, thank you.
The other question I have is on the, the blocks, so if we look at the block that is labeled residential retrofits.
Yeah.
I looked at this for some time and decided that residential retrofits were expected to achieve three point five kiloton CO2 equivalent per year avoided. Would that, would that be the right number, about three point five?
With the residential retrofits, I know that we are looking at potentially, we would need to have a program of somewhere between two and three percent of our housing stock retrofitted. So that's, I know that that would be the rate that we would have to imply to achieve these savings.
I'm not questioning the number, I'm just asking, is that the number? Is that how you read this graph? Because the block that is labeled residential retrofits stretches all the way from about two point eight five to about three point five.
Yeah, my understanding is that residential retrofits is quite a substantial piece of the puzzle here, and that will net us three hundred and sixty five dollars per ton in terms of savings.
But I'm, I'm reading the bottom axis, the numbers on the bottom axis.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, so it looks like to me it's three point five, in other words, the bottom right corner of each block of corner of each block of color actually gives you the the number as opposed to the bottom left corner.
Yes, I think I see what you mean.
So that that's something that needs to be very clear.
Yeah.
That these blocks really work because they make mathematicians think of area under the graph. And I don't think that's what you're implying. It is in fact the point of information.
I will ask for more clarity on the X Y axis.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Baxter. Any other discussion? Just before we leave, I'd like to compliment Ms. Buskey and Ms. Collins, and I thought they were both excellent reports and helped me kind of understand the big picture broken down into bite sized chunks. So thank you to both you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Josh, not Joshua Andrews, we have Josh coming up to give us a capital projects update. Floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have a presentation, which hopefully they can pull up for us here. Excellent. Perfect. So this capital projects update briefing is meant to give a brief summary of the projects that we currently have underway in Colwood. As I say, it's just a brief summary, so I'll burn through some of the projects here, give you a quick update as the briefing outlines. And if you have any questions at the end, I'm happy to answer anything on on any of the projects. This isn't meant to be a full financial update that's coming for the Q three update through our financial services and this is just as the projects are going. So we can jump to the first project here. I have the thing. I have the thing. So the first is the La Toria VMP roundabout project at La Toria VMP. It's going very well. The contractor, Scanza, is currently constructing the mechanically stabilized earth wall at the northeast corner as well as some of the underground utilities. They've already done some of the waterworks underground and are making good progress. We've had some feedback from the detour through Brookside and Castlewood there, and we've done what we can to try to alleviate some of that traffic by implementing some temporary speed bumps and updating the traffic management traffic management plan for the construction to try to ease the passing because we're aware that it's a little difficult to, especially at peak times, to get through the intersection. And then currently, the substantial performance is slated for September thirtieth, twenty twenty three. So hopefully by the end of twenty twenty three, we can clean up any deficiencies and get the project button button buttoned up by the end of the year. The next project is active transportation. So the two sidewalk projects that are currently well in design and moving forward are Owens and Ben Homer. They've been designed and the tender is currently being drafted. We're going to go to tender in October for those two projects. And then award likely in in October, November, with construction likely starting in December or January, depending on the contractor's schedule, whoever that contractor will be. We estimated it might be four months or so for a construction period for those two projects. Once, I mean, this is these are just two sidewalk projects in a longer list, so once we've got this tender out the door. McWhaney, our consultant, can start working on the designs for the next slated. Three projects will be Pegel, Kelly, and Haiti. That's a quick brief overview, brief overview of active transportation projects. Oh, the next one is the intersection at Hatley-Matson intersection. So we've I've lost my page. So we have already two design options that are at fifty percent, thereabouts fifty percent design completion. And we're going to be bringing those two design options to the community to get their feedback. Because this community has made it clear that they, you know, it's a special intersection, so we want to make sure everyone is on board with the final design before proceeding. Once we engage with the community, likely next week, I believe, we will be able to make a decision on the final design. And then proceed to final design and cost estimate. That's also McWhaney working on on that design. On that design. The Beckhill sanitary sewer connection. This is one of the ones that we prioritize to try to get out to tender in September. So we've got the designs finalized to connect the two stratas on Beckhill Place to our sanitary system. The designs are finished, the tender has been put out, it's currently out to tender. And that tender closes next week on October eleventh. So once we get those, we've had a few questions about it and had a state meeting, so we expect to have a number of submittals. And we'll likely get to get that going into construction over the next month or two after procurement or so. So that's good news for the Beckhill stratters that are very, very much looking forward to being connected to sewer. Oh, this project is already finished, but it's the the summer was the Squamal Laguna Bridge repairs. So as the as the report outlines, every five years, we have a full review and survey of the bridge, which then outlines repairs that need to be done. This is the final set of repairs from the last review, which was like four years ago, that was completed this summer. So in the next year or two, we'll likely need another full review of the bridge by a structural engineer to recommend the next repairs and maintenance that is required for the bridge to keep it serviceable. Before before anything else gets washed away. The big one, Galvingus Pedestrian Bridge, that too is actually out to out to tender right now. We started by doing an RFPQ, so a request for pre qualifications. The intent is to get as many proponents to submit on and narrow down to three or four proponents, which will then proceed to the next stage in the tendering process to and ask those to submit to an RFP or request for proposals. In those requests for proposals, they will submit a conceptual design and cost estimate, which will then be able to weigh against each other and council will be able to make a decision based on which design they like the best and and which team they would like to proceed with. Well, that's the intent. And as I said, that's the RFPQ is already out and that closes October thirteenth right now. Another one is the Murray's Pond viewing platform. This is a smaller project, but the the viewing platform is a small aluminum platform that is being installed currently on the edge of Murray's Pond to provide a, you know, a place to view and sort of access into Murray's Pond because it's hard to get in there yourself right now. That's currently underway. The biggest problem with this was the procurement of the aluminum from international supply lines and even on the island, it's apparently very hard to get. There's labor shortages for the fabricators. So they're struggling with that, but the latest update that should still be completed by in the next month or two. Again, it's just the it's just the aluminum structure that has been causing some some delays on that project. Other than that, it's going it's going well and well with the budget. The Allendale Drain Study. So the study is being completed on the Allendale drainage basin. Right now, the report is in its second iteration, is being reviewed by staff. Currently, we're reviewing the culvert sizing options for the long for the path to and through Colwood Creek. And then looking at the retaining retaining water in that Allendale basin itself. You can see on the map, the basin is is in red or pink. And then all those all those labels there are the different culverts that the water would pass through and how that affects our our drainage. Now, they'll be in P upgrades, as I'm sure you're aware, is nearing completion. The final things are a few. There's some sidewalk to still do. There's some landscaping that is outstanding and the the traffic signals are being commissioned tomorrow. But we're getting very close to the completion of this project after quite some time in the road widening and the paving of Allendale and Wildcat. Yeah, we're getting to the finish line on on this project for sure. That is also within within budget. I think finally is the other intersection, the Hatley-Matson. Not Hatley, it's Matson. I flipped the wrong page. The Matson-Latoria intersection. So this project is also nearing completion. The traffic signals will be arriving next week and then installed and energized in a week or two following that. This project's gone fairly well, but the the actual status is pending the Q three update because this project's being run by the developer and the city is just in partnership with them. So we're waiting for a status update from them, but we are very confident we're within budget and and should be finished in this spring. That's the calls notes of the full report that was in the briefing. And if you have any questions about any of the projects, I'm happy to take your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Counselor Day.
Thank you. So my first question is regarding the Allendale District Lands. And I've noticed that there's quite a significant jog in the bike lanes between the old road and then the new road joining onto it. Specifically at the bottom of the hill where the entrance is to the the Patterson Pit. There's a very distinctive, you know, you've got a shoulder of the road and then all of a sudden the lane is taking over where the bike lane is. I'm just wondering, is that going to be adjusted or has it been considered?
Thank you for the question through the chair. The you're talking about on VMP?
Yes.
You mean, yeah, yeah. So that VMP that from that point down to Carandale will be done. I'm not sure timeframe of when that stretch of road will be constructed. But the intent is to carry on that cross section through to extend that bike lane. So right now, the transition is, I think, as it's going to stay, but we can certainly revisit that and have a look at that, how that bike lane transitions in the interim.
Yeah, it just looked like something that might be dangerous if there was a truck coming out at the same time as the cyclist was coming down the hill and there's traffic in the mornings and I noticed a surprising number of cyclists using that route. So the other question I have is in regards to the La Toria Roundabout at VMP. The original cost estimate was six million. We're now at seven point six eight five million. And I'd like to know how much is being paid by developer cost charges and how development and how much the citizens are subsidizing it.
Thank you for the question. I could I'm gonna have to defer to finance for those specifics.
I will return with exact information at the third quarter financial update. But this project is being funded by both developer primarily DCCs, but also developer contributions, and there's no direct taxpayer implications. I say direct, meaning the construction costs.
But the citizens are paying a significant portion, are they not?
No, they are not.
Okay, so that's coming back with the budget update.
And I say, no, they are not for the construction costs. There are, of course, ongoing considerations into the future that citizens will be party to those.
Okay.
Thank you, Counselor Day. Counselor Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A couple of small questions. Shouldn't be too much, Josh. The Beckhill sewer, we've heard a lot about that recently, that tendering. Help me out here. Does that tendering include the hookups for individual homes? Or is that just the connections on both ends?
Thank you through the chair. Thanks for the question. Just the hookups on two ends. However, on Fulton Road, there are three services that are being provided to those homes as per agreements with those homes to allow access to that that right away. But the individual homes are already connected to their own the strata system. So we're just hooking up those total strata systems on both ends.
I think my concern is this specifically, if all of a sudden those twenty or thirty homes want to hook up, are they going to wait another six months while we facilitate that? Or do we have mechanisms in place that once the sewer goes in that these homes are going to be able to hook up in a matter of very tight timeline?
Thanks for the question. Maybe I'll take a moment to explain the system a little bit. The stratas, those individual homes are all hooked in to the same system that they're serviced to a subject bed and the seven. So we're just in providing these two hookups at both ends. We get to eliminate that system that they're already hooked into and they can just feed into our existing.
I got you. So there's no need to hook up each individual home because they're all running down a line on the street already. See, yes, arts degree.
Yeah. Good question. Thank you.
The Goose Bridge design, I'm fascinated, and I think that's a big win for the community. Will those designs come to us at some point for some kind of selection processes?
Absolutely.
Thank you. And the signal at Allendale, you said if we were going to throw the switch on that shortly, is that right?
Yes, that's the plan. We're hoping to have a walkthrough tomorrow to have a look, so it should be really any day that those are active.
It annoys the neighborhood to no end to watch the left turn lane or the left turn signal cycle with nobody actually in the left turn lane. So please tell me it's going to be properly sensorized or what have you as far as activation goes for cross traffic. Please tell me I'm not going to sit there and wait for no gravel truck to go across the road whatsoever. Not that it's about me.
I can't speak to the exact signalized timing, but that's all programmable and we can
certainly leave that with you. But if we're going to annoy the public by making them stop for no cross traffic, that we're going to hear about that as the point.
Certainly, we can figure that out. Thank you.
That's it. Thanks, Josh.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Kobayashi.
Thank you very much, Chair. A great presentation, Josh. Just a simple question here. The the, yeah, I'm getting a bit mixed up because I don't I don't understand this number budget because some of the numbers have moved a little bit. So it'd be, I think it'd be really good if we see like a rev one, rev two, rev three, you know, as so we know how many revisions it's been through. Because budget, you know, you'll always be within budget if you keep revising it, right? So that's what I have issue with right now. That's so it's just a comment right now. If it could be more clarified on what rev or up to, that would be really good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Kobayashi. Counselor Baxter.
Sorry, I didn't hear a name there. This question's for the Director of Finance. The future costs on the roundabout that the taxpayer will pay for, we're talking about maintenance, yes?
Thank you for the question. Yes, both maintenance and setting aside funding for any future replacement works. And to be clear with DCC programs, there is a one percent assist factor. So there is right now approximately one percent, but this the majority of this project costs. Construction costs are being borne by the development, both the community and the direct developer in this instance.
And that one percent is required by provincial law, I believe.
Correct. And so in this instance, that is coming through surplus.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Mayor Martin.
Thank you, Chair. The picture that you showed us of the Squamal Bridge, is that is that the final or was that while they were working on it?
That's the that's while they were working.
Okay, great. I was I was. Okay, great. I I was I was worried that that's how it ended. Uh, and then the Galloping Goose, um, can someone tell me when the federal grant needs, so when does this bridge have to be completed by? Is the, is there an expiry date for the grant?
Uh, I believe the grant expires in twenty twenty-six, so it should be constructed prior to and there's a month there to uh fi- I think fall twenty twenty-six was.
Okay. I just, yeah, I just wanted to be clear on on the expiry date. Mr. Roll, looks like you want to add something.
Mr. Roll?
Uh, through the chair, uh to Mayor Martin, there's another important date on that particular grant and that September of twenty-three, construction needs to commence.
Uh, thank you, Counselor Day. Before I go to you for your second shot, I have to get my two cents worth in here. Um, sewer master plan, is that still in the works and coming?
Uh, yes, it is, but uh I don't have the details on on the sewer master plan right myself.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, yeah, it's um current interview in its first iteration. We're hoping to have it buttoned up sometime in November.
I'm sorry, I missed that. Can you sing it?
Um, we're currently reviewing a first draft iteration. We're hoping to have it buttoned up by the end of November.
Fantastic. Secondly, the uh sidewalk on Matchozen Road from Hatley to the top of the hill, I think, was at one point part of a contract that had been tendered and a grant received. Is there money left over to extend that if the intersection geometry is finalized?
There is. Thank you for your question. Um, yes, there is still money left in the grant, which that grant, um the timeline for that grant is the end of twenty twenty-three. So the design for this, uh, the Hally Matchozen intersection should be covered underneath that grant as well. We don't have a cost estimate yet for that work, and I I think there is a hundred and fifty thousand, don't quote me on that, left in the grant, so that's unlikely enough to finish the full construction.
Thank you. Uh, and my third question on the um Galloping Goose Bridge, which we're all sort of anxious and we think is gonna be a real statement structure. As you evaluate the requests for proposals and qualifications, have you got a mechanism to sort of assess which bridges may cost more to maintain and operate over the years versus, you know, some of these real fancy high-tech ones where you have to order parts from Italy or do you have, do you have a mechanism to sort of at least rank them on that?
Uh, thanks for your question. We are still drafting the R F P, and we can certainly include and we will be including a the a maintenance um estimate on what they estimate the maintenance for whatever one bridge is. And so we can include that on the ranking system in the R F P first. Absolutely.
Thank you so much. Counselor Day again.
Thank you. I just forgot my third question. I noticed, and I can't even remember which one of the reports, but one of these three reports here tonight mentioned that uh our road line painting has basically moved in-house. And I'm wondering when we could see uh Suk Road have its lines painted on it between Callwood Crescent and Goldstream Avenue, because I happened to be along that way in the dark the other night. It was noticeably difficult to tell where the two lanes were. The other person driving the other lane was having difficulty as well. And also, those intersections are still at maximum time, even if nobody is in the left turning lane to go to London Drugs, for example. The lights are are still in their full sequence right now, even if there's no traffic. So I think that's contributing some mornings to traffic congestions, specifically that intersection. So I'm just wondering when those issues might be resolved.
Uh, Mr. Roll?
Thank you uh for that feedback. We will uh pass the line painting feedback on to our operations team. Uh, I believe the traffic signalized infrastructure has been damaged underneath Suk Road. So we will return with uh information on uh the speed with which we can have that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Okay, I don't think we need a motion. I think you're off the hook. Well done. Thank you, Josh. Well done. Um, Mr. Logan, move adjournment. Move adjournment? Any any problems? We're adjourned.